So, alright, so we're here with John Cannon, who is the president of the Wycomco County Council, and he's also our at-large representative.
Good.
Good, good, good. Hey, it's always great talking to you. Um, I do want to let you know that we are recording this, so the public will know your views as we're getting close to November. And, uh, you know, we just want to be well-informed before we cast a vote. Um, and of course, due to the dice, we might have to talk a little louder, but that's alright. Um, how long have you been on the county council?
I've been on the council, uh, for all over the last sixteen years.
For all over the last sixteen, wow, wow. During that time, uh, what are some of the highlights and not-so-high-of-lifes?
Well, we've had a lot of challenges. The county's been really, 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 so much. We've gone leaps and bounds as far as supporting education, as far as the airport concern, as far as, you know, funding the police officer, police department, working with Mike Lewis. I got in about the same time with George.
Okay.
Yeah, so we've been, we've been on that ride together for a long time.
Wow.
So we've done an awful lot. We've gone leaps and bounds on that issue. Pretty much every avenue that you've been managing, the county's responsible for. We have, we have really created a great environment for the county. Most of the challenges we've faced are usually, what I find out, similar to what happened the other night, reference to DAP. A lot of the challenges we've found, the strongest challenges, when you have a combination between neighbors and property rights, and certain, you know, maybe the agriculture industry, or agriculture, under expanding certain areas. And similar to the circumstances in being the residents that live there. So there's always that give and take between property rights and, you know, trying to secure confidence in the neighborhood and secure neighborhood, and then also trying to appeal to those industries to support that county.
Right.
And there is the middle ground. The changes that you get, there is a middle ground. You have to find the middle ground. I think we've done a good job of that.
Okay, yeah, good, good, good. So you've not had a problem with working across the aisle with Democrats, or independents, or libertarians, or anything like that, to get the job done, correct?
Dave, as long as they agree with me, I get along very well.
Nice.
That's a bad joke. Seriously, that's a bad joke. Very easy to get along. Uh, as far as ideology, it doesn't really make that big a difference. There are certain issues where I think conservative philosophy is very important. I think that's very important, how you're going to stand your money, how you're going to handle your finances. That's critical. For the most part, you're dealing with education, and you're dealing with public safety, and you're dealing with roads.
Right.
Doesn't matter if you're a Democrat or a Democrat. You want to get the job, and I want to make Wycomco County where it is to live.
And speaking of roads, uh, yeah, I appreciate, I mean, I know you've been working a lot with trying to make sure that, uh, our roads down in our direction is taken care of. And, uh, you actually sent me an email, and I appreciate that. It spoke with, uh, what was his name? Mr. Whitelock?
Yeah, Mark Whitelock, he's doing a great job.
He is doing a phenomenal job, and he's, um, got, there's actually some plans for the High Askin area. Um, however, some of the people down there are wondering about, like, places like Wittenland, Warren Oak, and Jesterville. Um, is there anything that can be done to find out if there's any plans for that?
Well, there can be, and it's something that, as a matter of fact, you know, when you contacted me, I gave you the information that I could get for you. Uh, we can always follow up on that and see if there's greater, greater needs. Uh, we have seven hundred miles of roads in Wycomco County.
Wow.
And we do everything we can to try to address all the, all the major concerns throughout the entire county on an equal basis. And I leave it up to Mark Whitelock, if his department can decide where the high priority is. And of course, it never hurts if you feel that your certain area needs more attention than what may be given in other areas of the county. Bring it to our attention, bring it directly to the executive's attention, or directly to Mark Whitelock, and, uh, and see if you can address it, and that means...
Awesome, awesome. And so you have a, pretty much, an open-door policy? People talking to you?
Definitely. That's the whole key. That's the whole key in government, is to have an open door, and to listen, and to act, and to work, and to be responsible for, for what the people expect you to do.
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, um, and I do appreciate being out there and being available to people that contact you, because, again, during the area, or down the area that I kind of work more with, which is down three forty-nine, and some of the back roads on Quanico, they felt like they've been out of the loop.
I can see that.
You know, they felt like, I mean, the broadband situation sometimes, where they can't watch PAC fourteen and see what you guys are talking about, which I do appreciate. The time y'all have been spending here lately, especially with the DAP tanks.
True.
But they have felt like they've been out of the loop.
Well, okay. See, that's why, Dave, and I mean this in all sincerity, is that what you do, is that you're a voice for that community, and that's really what's needed. Um, council members as a whole aren't necessarily going to be able to get into an area and say, "Oh, I recognize a problem here." It's really up to a lot of the members of the community to come to their representative, and to be a voice and say, "We have a problem here." And then, then the key is, how well is your representative going to respond? And how effective are they going to be in addressing your concerns?
That's really good, and I mean, of course, I'm not, I mean, we're doing a commercial for our councilwoman, but Nicole has been doing a great job of that, and I really actually appreciate her introducing me more to you and other of the council members.
I think, really, Mark Kilmer, I think, did have some job.
Yeah, I never got a chance to meet him, but I have heard some great things about him.
He's a really good representative.
Awesome, awesome. Now, um, as you're traveling this great county of ours, what are some of the pressing issues that you want to focus on after the election?
I think right now, we really have to look at, there's quite a few of them. Water and Sewer right now is really big. We have a lot of failing system systems, and we have to address it.
Expecting businesses down there, too?
Yeah, this morning alone, I had, I had conversations with Maryland Department of the Environment, because we're trying to get them to bring circuit riders down here to, to help with the environmental health department.
Good, good.
And to get, yeah, and to beg to get people in here to address the issues that we have. We have installers, we can't be going, we have real people can't sell property. And we don't want to come to a standstill in Wycomco County, which is a close to being right now. So we're trying to work out an arrangement. If we're doing it at our next meeting, we're going to, we're going to invite them down.
Okay.
Yes, literally go down and review a contract. We are going to find out how we can resolve this problem so that the installers can keep their, their business openness of the utilities and sell the properties, and the values of people's home can be salvaged.
And you're talking about this down the road here?
This is, this would be all throughout the county.
Okay, okay.
Uh, we also have a master water and sewer plan, which is a larger program.
Right, right.
We're trying to consolidate that from a twenty-year program to maybe a five-year program, because I think it has to be, it has to be something we, we work on, and we get it done quickly. So, and, and that means we're also, Maryland Department of Environment, Maryland Department of Planning, Maryland Department of Health. We're trying to see what we can do. It's going to take a lot of funding. But whether or not we, whether or not we take the homes that are in need, that have failing systems, whether we try to figure out how to hook them up to an existing system that may be, you know, may be a township that's in heaven, or a position in Pittsville, or in Gasol, or in Delmar. Whether or not we can work with the municipalities and the townships to expand their facilities, or whether we put standalone facilities, county standalone facilities, in, into, uh, into operationally, where we address those standalone, those, those communities that can't be accessed through annexation or another type of thing.
Good.
But it's, it's a multi, it's a multi-able issue that we have to try to address.
Good, alright. Now, of course, a lot of times that we, we are concerned, we have found that our ditches are in need of, we need to take care of.
Sure, right.
And, and of course, I've had people tell me, they said, "While we're down there and we're taking care of the ditches, what about broadband?"
Right.
Is, uh, are we working in those areas and getting those things covered?
Yeah, we are. We're trying to make sure we have a, we have a, a mental understanding with talk communication, and, um, first step was to how, how well we were progressing.
Mm-hmm.
Then, uh, we get the, the note that Wycomco has been granted thirteen twenty-three million dollars to a sand broadband in Wycomco County.
Right, but that was in Pittsville, I heard.
Exactly. That's in Pittsville, and there's Sun and Allen. And that was we asked, and we asked that question, and said, "Okay, I'm not quite sure how it was designated in Pittsburgh. If East Side of the County would be first, okay, we could live there. What's your timeframe?" And they said, "It's a year." So, a year is it, then what? Are we going to the west side? And they said, they said, "Yes."
They did.
So after this first step.
If, if they get more, they said they're pretty sure they're getting more funding.
Right.
But they're not going to have any funding after the east side project, most likely?
Well, I believe that they are anticipating that, and I believe this federal government and the state government are trying to make that happen.
Okay.
And I have full confidence that that will happen. We actually were meeting, because we told them we were going to hold a secret fire. We have a meeting about three to four months. So obviously, they will be coming in also in our next meetings to let us know how their success has been on the east side of the county. And also give us, again, to reiterate what their timeframe is for the west side of the county.
No, I'm not.
That Maryland broadband has already laid a lot of trunks, trunk lines down into, into that area.
Well, you know, I've noticed also, I've had some of the community tell me that there are these little things that are up on the telephone pole. And I don't know, they're thinking they're five G?
It's ready, it's somewhat ready to go. It's, it's broadband, I wouldn't say it has to be five G, but here's broadband, trunk lines have been laid down there. So it may be easier process for your talking to, is to install that last, not the last one, actually, the last hundred yards, but to actually get to those homes that need access.
Awesome. By the way, as y'all hear a lot of commotion around us, this is what local business, when it's busy, sounds like.
Yeah, it does.
The business, the big, great thing, great thing. Now, um, I do want to talk about DAP tanks real quick.
Sure.
I know you're getting tired of hearing DAP tanks. Um, last night, there was a final vote of me.
Sure.
I mean, at least, for now.
Right, right, right.
And, uh, before the amendments that Councilman Josh Hazen brought up, it was a six-one vote, which included you. But after the amendments, it went five-two, and you went the other direction. Was there a reason?
Well, I voted in favor of the amendments. I think I might have voted in favor of all of them. There may have been one I didn't, I didn't, but I thought, anyway, I voted in the majority for all the amendments.
Uh-huh.
I voted against the bill.
Okay.
I, I was, I preferred to have, um, a bill presented which would allow DAP tanks in the A-line districts. With tense requirements and restrictions that, for the most part, as planning zoning demonstrated, would isolate and would have isolated any DAP tanks to extreme outer regions of the county. So that it would not include any neighborhoods whatsoever. And I felt that they were going to lock up to create a very good plan.
Oh, yeah.
My concern with an outright ban is, I think it sends a wrong message sometimes of Wycomco County is business-friendly, Wycomco County is a DAP town. We would have achieved the exact same degree of solution, in my opinion, by isolating using the amendment, as we did by an outright ban. But I think the outright ban, someone would have been overstepped and concerned. So I voted for the amendments, knowing that the ban was probably going to be postponed and would, 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 uh, would be in effect, would take effect.
Sure.
I wanted to make sure that it was the best bill possible. So I voted for the amendment to make it a better bill.
Right.
Even though the bill as a whole, I felt, was not the best solution.
Yeah, I heard a lot of amendments and amend and amendments, and I, I got kind of lost there a little bit. So basically, let me ask you, I mean, out now, DAP tanks, are you, are you for them with right regulations? Or are you against them being, having more here in Wycomco County?
For the most part, I don't like DAP tanks at all.
You don't like that?
You saw, you saw the issues that it created in that one neighborhood.
Absolutely.
And, and I really, I really have a problem with that since, and I've expressed that with the voting issue as well, with my concerns. I, that I visited the Anorak Digestor, uh, Digestor firm in the Seacoal.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it's, uh, it is different. But anyway, so I spent, I spent a day there to see exactly how they deal with the same type of sludge, same type of DAP materials. And it's very efficient, no odor, and I thought, I think it's just a much more modern industry as a whole. So I think the future is going to be Anorak Digestor, which is closed off.
Closed off.
And addressing it that way, together with some composting as opposed to, you know, open tankers we have now in Wycomco County.
Now, would you say that, thank you, Brad, um, I know it's very temporal tank, but, um, I work it for doing it locally.
Sure.
And I know when they wash down the chicken feathers and everything else, it goes to somewhere down the drain, but I know it'll go into Wycomco or I hope it does.
Right, right.
What is the difference between that, that they hold it there, and what the DAP tank is down there and, uh, where it melts?
Well, there's a big difference between whether you have the material stored in the processing plant, and you store the material out in, you know, agricultural area where, you know, you have the potential, as we've witnessed, where the other itself becomes very unbearable. Unbearable for the community.
Right, right.
But that's, that's pretty much your difference, you know? The processing plant, you know that you're going to have those type of circumstances.
Okay, good answer there. Now, I'm going to switch gears a little bit here. Of course, it's this election season, and we see a lot of candidates that are working together.
Sure.
In many different areas. I've seen statewide, or some of the delegates are working together, some of the local are. You're pretty much alone.
I always try to run my own campaign, Dave. I always have. My take on that is that if you, if you align yourself with another candidate to a certain degree, I think the only thing you're going to do, you're going to probably still keep the voters who support you, but then you could alienate some voters who, who say, "Oh, well, I didn't realize you had that particular alliance."
Right, right.
So I try to make sure that people recognize that I'm a very balanced candidate, a very, very, I stay very objective in my, in my perspective of everything that I try to accomplish, and I try to run on my merits.
Sure, sure.
And that's pretty much why I run my own campaign.
Okay, now, I do notice, now, thank you for that also. I've noticed that during this time, there are, like, when, when it's getting down to pass some primaries, whatever, we're going towards, you know, the, the final stretch, if you will, there are people that are endorsing people for different levels, such as, there are, there are people who are endorsing whoever for county executive.
Right.
Or, and I don't see you pretty much saying, "I'm behind this person." So you don't do that, the endorsing of others, you kind of like?
I stay, I stay neutral.
Neutral?
I stay neutral, sure.
Okay, and again, I'm just...
I mean, it's, it's a matter, it's just, I think it's, it's, it's just, I think the best way to explain is the fact that if you have people that aren't going to vote for that individual, and I endorse that individual, I could possibly lose their vote as well.
Got you.
So I'd rather, I'd rather leave the vote based on, on my philosophy and what my record is, as opposed to possibly sacrifice, sacrifice votes for someone's perspective on the other individual.
Impressive, I like that. Good comment there. Now, I want to ask you about, uh, our recovery one eighty situation down, down three forty-nine, actually, on Sandy Hill Lane. Again, uh, this rehab facility, we're still trying to figure out what exactly it is. It's actually labeled as still, as far as on, uh, that the house is still under elderly care. It's not elderly care. There's actually people who are there for about six months. They're trying to recover, which I'm all about, people get a second chance, and then they move out, someone else moves in.
Right.
The only problem is that the community of that area has had problems with run-ins, trespassing, things like that, and has talked to some of the other people who work in our business world, and, um, they're saying that this is happening under the radar.
Sure.
How do you feel about that?
Well, again, it comes down, Dave, kind of like what I said before, the fact that, you know, you as an active, as an active, as for that community, this is a plus, because you're allowing that to the attention of your, your elected representative.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, as far as how it's going to go together, I, I am not sure. The county council as, as a body doesn't necessarily get robbed in permits or anything to that nature.
Sure, sure.
So you have to see how, how it was, how it was permitted, whether or not the zoning is, um, is in line with, with that type of housing. Whether it's zoned to multi-unit, I, I don't know whether public law comes into play there or not, but those are the happens you have to pursue. Whether or not, after the fact, that it now is sort of being considered a public nuisance, would you say?
That's what I was about to say, yeah.
Yeah, if it, if it are, if those happen, and maybe creating some touch of nuisance within a community, then you have to address all the things that shift or any loss, and they want to go back to planning and zoning, or however it might be. And that's something I would also have to look into.
Sure.
Uh, to find out exactly who addresses those certain chances. Are they held to a standard of accountability?
Right.
Where they absolutely at the risk to their license if they become a public nuisance. And I would think that their license would have to state something to respect, and they cannot be a public nuisance.
So, so you're, I mean, what you're encouraging, if there's any community members having problems, one, make a report with, uh, with our sheriff's office.
I, I'd say if they're, I mean, just as in any other situation.
Any other situation, right. And then, um, there is that, is that if there's enough complaints, and they're bona fide complaints, not just because you just don't like it.
Sure.
But if there are bona fide enough, enough complaints coming out, that it may be labeled as a public nuisance. Now, as far as regulations and stuff.
Right.
Uh, who would check and see if they're being up to par with regulations?
Well, here's what I would say. I mean, you're talking to your elected representative now. You can just, just as easy as I could, you could also, let's say you would start, you would call planning and, and you say, "Yeah, is there a permit for it? Did it, did it have to go through a public hearing?"
Is that public knowledge if we ask them that?
You have every right to know that. If you don't let them, let them tell you, then, right?
Love it.
Ask the question.
Okay.
And now, here's, here's, here's what I would do, is if they say, "No, no, it's not planning and zoning." The first thing you ask is, "Well, where should I be, where should I be going? Who should I be talking to? Should I be talking to the health department? Is there some other area, uh, which, which deals with compliance that I should talk to? Who else should I go to?" The thing is, so they only go to agencies you want to, to find out what you need, what, what needs to be done to address your concerns. And if they say you're at the wrong place, always say, "Where else do I go? Where's the right place? Do I go to the issue area?
Right, right, right.
Go back to the council, or do I go to another department?
Is this, would, would you agree that this is kind of an odd situation to have a rehab facility so far out of everything?
Well, I don't know. You know, a lot of cases, you know, I'm afraid it's sort of the nature of, of, uh, communities as a whole. When you find out there's a rehab place, from my perspective, you have a lot of neighborhoods that say, "Wait, I don't know if we want that in, in our backyard."
Right, right, right.
So I believe that maybe the fact that they do, they put it where it is now, or they've isolated it to a rural area, and that may be a plus. Not to say, though, that people living there might find that inconvenient.
Should, would you say that, that people should have been made aware? Or it should be labeled as such, instead of not being aware?
I don't know, I don't know what the real proper process might be. I mean, you know, my first thought would be, well, was there a public hearing? And there may not have been, a public hearing might not have been required, unless maybe it was a special exception to put them in.
Interesting.
But if you're changing, you know, if you're changing, if you, if you unit itself, if, if the use of that building itself has changed substantially, it might be that a public hearing could be, or you could address that and, and sort of maybe challenge the program.
I like that, alright, appreciate that. Alright, so we're going to move a little bit farther down the road here. Uh, the West Side Community Center, you are aware where that is.
Right.
It's behind the, uh, Volusia Fire Department down there. It hasn't really been used as much since COVID. And, uh, the thing is also with that is that there was an apple school program that stopped, ceased.
Right.
Um, the community still needs that community center. There has, there has been talks about them closing it down. What can, uh, what can we do as, or talk to you, what can be done to try to keep that going? I mean, the young lady, or the lady that used to be the, uh, secretary of kitchen, uh, the neighbor, Mrs. Birdie, I, I know it's a little loud here, I'm sorry about that. But, uh, Mrs. Birdie said she's willing to go back down there. What can we do to keep that place open?
Well, I think we need to work with recreation parks, even though it's a great recreation.
Yes, he is, he's a great guy.
Fantastic.
Great guy.
Try to work with him. And Steve's so fair about it. I mean, he tries to really address all the concerns, all the pride that we have to him. So, yeah, that would be the first step, and see how that makes play in this comprehensive plan, part of the county as a whole.
Okay, okay.
Because it's always about funding, and it's always about where, where pieces of that pie can be distributed.
And, and I think, and also, I do know that they said that the community center down there is in kind of, it needs some work done to it.
Sure.
It's a little bit outdated, so, I mean, is there, I guess that law fund, a double law fund reminds that, that you're allotted four parks, right?
Sure.
Okay, so that's not something, okay?
Unless there was, unless there's some, some fashion. Steve's very good at giving grants, and maybe in some way, Steve could find some other type of grant, but also should, could help subsidize that problem. It, it kind of depends. That would be, Steve would be the one that would know yes or no.
Alright, good.
And run the county. But it's something that the county management should probably go, get it addressed.
And I did talk to Steve Miller yesterday, and Steve is actually, yeah, he's actually pro trying to get that back on, you know? So I'm kind of giving you a heads up before you hear, you know?
That's a good thing.
He does, he's a great guy. Now, I'm, I'm going to kind of wrap this up, because I'm, it's getting really busy in here.
Sure.
Um, the detention center, I know we talk about our first responders, which we need to take care of, but I'm hearing that the detention center, which is under the county, um, you know, there are people who are correctional officers there that, they're leaving. We can't keep them. I mean, is there any plans to help out, and maybe give some raises? I know we want to get our roads, we definitely our roads division and all, public, everything that done, but what about the detention center and the correctional office?
Well, the county just did a comprehensive, uh, state compensation plan, and part of that was to make sure that, based on, based on the study that we paid for, uh, based on the public demographics in counties in the state of Maryland, they reviewed the job titles, and they reviewed the, uh, the salary structure, and then they adjusted all the pay ranges to be commensurate with what they felt was, for that particular, to, you know, pay, they felt was fair to each and every individual for each and every position. So we've just taken that measure. Now, whether or not that went far enough, I can't say it's a game. I haven't, you know, I haven't spoken individually, and I haven't heard an individual, uh, who leaves, saying, "This is important, I'm not getting paid enough." So I, I think if there are continuing concerns, and we have to deal with that, we're, you know, exactly.
Impressive. And, and again, I've learned one thing, thank you. I've learned one thing by going to the county council meetings, that word language is very important. So, has it been mentioned detention center? Or is that all grouped under sheriff's office, or?
No, it's, it's corrections.
Corrections, alright. I just want to make sure, because a lot of times we group things together, and just assume that it all works together when we're talking about different entities. Like, again, this is something coming from correctional officers I've spoken to. Uh, I mean, can they go through a lot there? They, they're very underappreciated and overworked.
They're not underappreciated, but they're overworked.
Well, maybe not by all of us. A lot of times, we think about, and that's not to take away from our fire departments, our, our first responders, but the detention center does not sometimes group separately. You know, they, those guys, they, I mean, one officer I talked to yesterday said he would have been working there, and get paid fourteen dollars an hour.
Right.
You could get that working at McDonald's.
Yeah, I get that, I get that, 100%.
You know, and...
I don't think that's a good thing, man. Now, this is something you have to understand. This is the function of the county.
Exactly, I love, I knew you were going to say that.
Because the county executive oversees the department, they oversee personnel. The council simply approves what's, when it gets to us.
You're the legislative branch.
Yeah. So it doesn't mean to say that we can't go to the executive department and say, hey, look, you need to work on corrections, because I've had those conversations before. Not necessarily with corrections, but with instances where I thought, you know, we may, we may be short cheating some people coming in, and I think we need to take that.
Now, this is going to be the last thing I promise, because when you said that, okay, and I know you probably won't give me the person, but of the three that run for county executive, does it, do you see, do you see that maybe this would be a better relationship with the, it's like, do you actually have maybe one of those three that actually will do some of those things and actually will open up their ears to what you have to do?
I know you'd like me to say that, but I will tell you that I can work easily with any one of those three, anyone who will do.
Good, that's, good response.
I'm anxious and I'm willing to work, well, if I get elected, I'm anxious and willing to work with any one of them.
And the only reason why, and one of the reasons why I say that is because it is a proven fact that our council has butted heads with a lot of our executives, I mean.
We had a problem, we had a problem at one point in time, but the problem, you know, however you might, you know, want to determine the calls and et cetera, et cetera, from my perspective, there were concerns that the council had on their, on how certain issues